Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners work session. Today is August 5th, 2024. The time is 3:00 PM. Please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Dutton to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Please join me in the prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Father, we come before you today for this work session to just thank you for all the wonderful blessings that we have to live in this awesome county. Father, we ask thy Spirit to be with us today, that it will guide us and strengthen us. Be with our families, be with all those victims of the storm. Be with all those who are feeling the effects of the storm of this economy, Father. Be with those who are feeling the effects of the rain and floods. Father, we ask these blessings humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number four, alcohol ordinance discussion. County Attorney?
Yes, sir. So you have a copy in front of you and it is based on our last meeting and the discussion that we had. I did just want to run a few things by you as far as changes that were made. I did move the purpose section from six dash ten oh three to six dash ten oh two just because it made more sense and the ordinance flows better. No changes other than the order of those two sections. In the definition section, I had my paralegal that's been working on ordinances for me. Take a look at it just to give me his thoughts on it. And he thought that it would make more sense and flow better to have a general definition section and then a definition section for the types of alcohol. So I did break that down into an A and a B, which separates types of alcohol from just general definitions. Also, at section six dash ten oh nine, qualifications of applicants. If you will look at number, at A, let's see, looks like A two maybe? Sorry.
Yeah, what page is it?
It printed duplex, so I don't have page numbers.
Yeah, there's your pages. It's like the fifth page.
You got page numbers, one, two, three, four, five, six. It is going to be page seven. No, sorry, page eight. And it is number two B on page eight. At the bottom of that page, you'll see D, denial of license hearing. But right above that at B, that is where we had talked about the video surveillance. And so based on our conversation, I just added some verbiage. The building officials shall also inspect the video surveillance system in the business to ensure compliance with this ordinance. All businesses licensed pursuant to this ordinance shall retain video surveillance records for 90 days and turn such records over to law enforcement upon request. Is 90 days enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we had not given it a timeframe and I thought that we definitely needed to do that. So if you will flip over.
Stephanie, will you check one more time on the surveillance equipment for a convenience store? Because there was legislation that came out that indicated that that was no longer allowed.
Okay.
So, you know, if that's a difference, then we would just.
Because the city of Griffin has an ordinance that requires it presently, John.
Here.
Thank you.
The reason I say that is because I saw something in the ACCG update that indicated that it was no longer allowed for jurisdiction to mandate that recordings be required by a convenience store.
Okay, I'll check on convenience stores and if we need to change it at second reading and to delete convenience stores, then we can.
Yeah, and my concern is this, is that if there is any criminal element that happens around there, there is no way to know anything.
Right, right.
And we're in the county and so we're not right where the police can get to us.
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly.
And so, I mean, we're allowing people to buy a chemical that will alter them, but we're not allowed to protect ourselves from.
Or the owner.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would be very interested.
It would be silly of a place not to put cameras in.
Right.
But my opinion is much like the seatbelt laws, you're giddy if you don't wear your seatbelt, but why is the government involved in this transaction?
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand it, but if you live someplace where someone has robbed a building on multiple occasions, you see having a camera is huge.
I agree that cameras are all in my house.
So which one, that's in two, two B?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to check on that?
I'm going to check on that. And if you, if you remember, section six dash ten oh nine was very, very, very long. So I actually pulled out the prohibited distances and made those separate sections and just renumbered everything to take those out of section one zero zero nine simply because it was too long and confusing. And the prohibited distances needed to be set out such that they're easy to find anyway.
So from six, ten, ten, or is it before that?
It is, so six, ten, ten, eleven, and twelve are all prohibited distances and prohibited locations. We took out the primary residences, left in public libraries. And I did leave, I did explain that standalone book repositories and little free libraries were not to be considered public libraries.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, so just in, I mean, I see that we've got several sections here. But what are the areas that we're asking bookstores to provide a protection around? I mean, I heard you say libraries.
So it is, the library is the only one that is not included in state law. Everything else is required by state law as well. It's housing authorities, schools and churches.
College campuses.
College campuses and other, other package stores.
So, so in our ordinance, it doesn't matter to us whether it's distilled spirits, wine, or malt beverages, you're going to get the same restrictions in terms of this?
They are different based on what the state allows as well. So distilled, because distilled spirits has different distances than wine and malt beverages.
So, so, yeah, to me, that's a little bit confusing because you can be within 100 yards of a church for distilled spirits or within 200 yards of the school and everything else.
I agree that it is confusing. And what I actually did was changed our ordinance language to mirror the state's language because ours was more confusing than the state's. The state's is still confusing, but I changed it to just mirror that language exactly.
So we're not adding anything new?
We're not adding anything new.
What'd you say in the comments?
And in most cases, we're not allowed to add anything new anyway.
So I get it. If you're the person who is the distributor or the wholesaler or the retailer, you know the difference between wine and malt. The average person that's going into the package store does not.
Those, yeah, and so those definitions are included in our definition section. Every definition is included, but you're right. Average Joe's not going to know. They're not going to know if the licensee.
So I'm just saying for that point, it's confusing because in someplace in front of a school is 200 yards. So if I'm going to have a store that's only going to serve, sell liquor, then I can't do this. But if I want to sell beer and wine in the same store.
Yeah, I don't have a way to prevent citizens from complaining.
I'm just saying that it's confusing to us even just on the front end.
Yes, ma'am. It's just going to be something that you're going to have to address from time to time.
Okay.
At section six dash ten fifteen, there was, there was a difference in, in section six, ten, thirteen and section six, ten, fifteen that was brought to my attention by Tammy Shackelford in Community Development. And that was that one seemed to allow the county manager to issue renewal licenses without your approval and the other requires your approval. Since this has always required your approval, I changed six dash ten fifteen to say that such applications shall be reviewed by the county manager. And upon investigation, if there is no change in the ownership of the licensee and no adverse reports, then he shall recommend to you that you issue the renewal license.
I like that. I'm good with that.
You're going to get a lot more of these coming across the dais. Whereas the old version of the ordinance, if it was renewal without any violations, then we could move those forward without bringing every renewal back to you.
And you could accord, you could according to that section, but you still couldn't according to the section above it. So they were in contradiction.
Right, because we've never not allowed the board to approve who got alcohol.
Nope, not approved, not for a first time. This was just for renewals.
I think it makes sense. I mean, we should only, we should only see those, I think, that actually have some adverse actions or anything.
I think this is just a consent agenda item.
It would be, yes.
Just put it in there so that we, and then if somebody sees it, one of us sees it and says, hey, we've got an issue here.
Yeah. So you've got payment of fee and renewal under the same thing. So where does the language change?
So the last sentence on that page, such applications shall be reviewed by the county manager. That's where the language is changed, that sentence, and it goes on to the next page.
Under ten fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Last sentence.
So it's three lines up all the way down?
Okay, if there is no change in the ownership of the licensee and no adverse reports from those agencies or departments, required to respect the premises of the licensee, county manager shall recommend. But I thought that was what you do anyway.
They, he was allowed to actually renew those licenses.
Yeah, you were not, you were not seeing renewals that were coming in every year that did not have any adverse action. The only thing that you were seeing was adverse actions or new, or new licenses.
Hmm, okay. Well, let's just stop doing that.
So you're going to see a lot more.
And we'll put them all on the consent agenda just.
That's fine, if they don't have any findings, there's no reason to not put them on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
All right, now, I think the last thing.
Put them in the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the last thing is section six dash ten forty-three. We actually had two sections for building regulations and I didn't realize that until I was looking at it for the 5,000th time. And so I just moved the second one to D under building regulations. So we don't have two building regulations sections now.
So D is just a movement from one place to another place.
D is just a movement from one place to another. And those are the only change, revisions from, from last time.
Okay.
So I know we didn't talk about this, but we did talk about this. What we're going to do, are we going to look at approving this and coming back with a quick amendment for the server?
We're going to add sections for the server permit, for tasting events, and for mobile caterers, licensed, mobile licensed alcohol vendors.
So the server license will go with the server, not with the business? And then what'd you say for mobile?
For mobile, mobile units like food trucks and then tasting events.
So we covered spas and whatever else on the last one, didn't we?
They're going to be covered, their definitions are in here and they will be covered under the server permit.
Can you get your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because you wanted them to require the server permit, even though they didn't have to be, become a license out on premise consumption business.
So on section, I know, I know we didn't talk about this. Section six, ten, forty-four, adequate lighting. I get really nervous when I see, like in the second sentence, it says contain sufficient lighting. Not really knowing what that means.
So, well, it kind of does, it kind of does tell you what sufficient is later on so that all entrances are clearly visible at all times when the premises is open for business. So that would be the definition of sufficient for this particular section.
What about the parking lot?
We're, currently, it was just, it was just entrances. So if you want to make a judgment.
And I say that just because you're always seeing these lawsuits where people are saying, the people knew that the parking lot was dark and blah, 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 blah. And, you know, so I'm just, I'm just, maybe I'm overthinking it, but, yeah. I'm just concerned that.
I think lighting in the parking lot actually goes to when you approve the development there.
Shall be sufficiently illuminated so that they may be viewed by those inside the premises. Okay. Good job.
Any other questions on this? We're going to vote on this on the next session. All right, all right, thank you.
Tonight, we're voting tonight?
For first reading, yes, ma'am. First reading.
Okay.
Item number two, Mulden Jenkins LLC to present review of the June 30, 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. Step forward.
Justin, if you would, please state your name and your address for the record for us, please.
My name is Justin Elliott, 180, Surrey Lane, Michigan, Georgia. All right, well, y'all should have, I believe, y'all should have two or three different documents, the PDF of the financial statements, and there is also an ADNA. I think y'all may have a hard copy of that and a PDF possibly. It's the auditor, yeah, that's it, auditor discussion analysis, the smallest one.
Thank you.
All right, so that's pretty much what I'm going to be, for the most part, presenting off of. Just to keep it, you know, kind of highlights, just kind of summary of the entire audit. So without further ado, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you with an overview of the, of our independent auditor's report in conjunction with a compliance report and also to, you know, discuss a few of the highlights of the financial statements for fiscal year 2023.
May I interrupt you before you start?
Yes.
I, this is for the year ending June of 2023.
Yes.
So we're talking about 15, 16 months ago, right? So, so when is the, the audit ending June 24 going? I'm asking that, but I'm generally asking this. When is that audit going to be due, to be done? Is it six months after the fiscal year ends?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I wanted to just say that, generally speaking for the public, this is the audit that we've not been able to get done and the audit that had some concerns from the tax collector's office. And, yeah. And what I didn't see in here in the summary was any explanation for, or any findings for those individuals. So now, if you want to start, you can, you can go on and.
Well, I'm with you, it should be.
Weed it out to us.
Yeah, it should.
I think.
Yeah, page 15 and 16 are document the, the findings in relation to the Tax Commissioner's Office.
Was it in this book? Because I did not see any findings in this book.
There's another one, that's a smaller one as well, there's.
Okay, so we wouldn't have seen that there were findings because this was here.
There's nothing in that gray one that you have. There's nothing in there.
That's correct.
Oh, there's stuff in there, it's just nothing that worth talking about.
That's not, but there's no findings in there.
Well, there's two different.
It says it's clean.
Yeah.
Well, there's like, there's the financial statements, the act for, then there's your compliance reports that are in all the.
Right, I always read the summary that says whether or not it's clean or it has opinions. Yeah, it says it's clean, but apparently not.
Well, then, audit is clean, there is some internal controls that were noted.
Okay.
But the overall, the unmodified opinion, we'll get to that in a little bit. But yes, but this, it should be in the ADNA, it should document it. The smallest one with the picture of the courthouse. So I'm going to probably, I'll probably, you know, stick with today. So you can kind of, if y'all want to follow with me on, you look on page four.
Just a second. Gwen, are you ready to move on?
I am, I am, I am.
All right.
All right, so on page four of the ADNA, it's talking about the independent auditor's report. All right, so this highlights the important information from this report, which is, which you saw in the, the large financial statements on the first, that's probably the first 20 pages. It documents, you know, talks about the audit, whose responsibility is what. So basically, it starts off by stating the management's responsibility is for the financial statements. The auditor's responsibilities is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. You know, our audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards and GAAP. You know, based on that, I'm happy to say, like we were talking about earlier, that we were able to render, able to give an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. This is also the highest level of assurance we can give as external auditors on your audit. That's what you want. This also means basically that the financial statements are considered to be presented fairly, which is what you want as well. This is a good thing. You don't want anything else besides that, I can promise you. So that's basically to sum up the independent auditor's report. It's basically you have a clean opinion, it's a good thing. Moving on, there's some other information we can, I'm going to kind of skip around, not going to, you know, read this in detail because it will take some time to go through it. Even though it's a smaller document, it will take some time.
We appreciate it, thank you.
For the sake of time, I know y'all's time is important. So I'm going to move on to page seven in the ADNA. This is where it kind of, you know, for the most part, we try to keep the majority of information about your financial statement highlights based on your general fund. That's where the majority of your expenditures, your revenues, and everything of that nature are recorded, collected, dispersed. So for, so you can see here, there's some, we like to put some graphs in here for your viewing to make it a little bit easier to digest. Sometimes it's hard to look at an income statement and balance sheet because it gets kind of, all the numbers get mixed in together. So you can see right out the gate, the first two graphs we have on number, on page seven and eight, the general fund revenues and expenditures. As you can see, the largest one you have is the property taxes and sales taxes, which, you know, make up about 55% of your total revenues. Your total revenues are 63 million. Now, this is not out of the ordinary, this is very common for a county of your size and of your, you know, of your operations, so that's nothing that jumps off the, you know, off the page of me. Moving on to the expenditures, you have $66 million of that, of which you're, you know, the public safety is the largest at 47%, very common as well. I see that, you know, most counties your size. The next largest is the general government. I believe the general government took, was, had a pretty big increase this year mainly due to the tornado disaster that happened, which was recorded in the general government. I believe that was an additional $7 million of expenditures, so that kind of bumped that percentage up more than normal. The next one kind of shows you a good graph about, of the last five or six years, showing your revenues and expenses, showing the steady increase, which is a good thing. That's what you want to see. This year, one of the, you know, one of the reasons why your revenues jumped up so high was based on your ARPA grant. Y'all recognize 10 million of that that was transferred over, so that was a, a big increase to your revenues and transfers in. Also, you'll see also another big increase to the expenses, the blue column, the blue one on the 2023. That's a, you know, that was also due to the tornado disaster, that was an additional $7 million expenses. You also had some revenues in conjunction with that. That was from the FEMA grant and some other additional grants during the year. So that's why you kind of see a steady jump right there together. All, that was all kind of collective, that was in comparison to the last two or three years. Now, if you move over to the page nine, you can kind of give you a better synopsis of what's your collective overall growth and fund balance over the last six years. I mean, it shows a pretty good, this is a very, I mean, from what I can see here, these are all very positive signs of showing the continued growth over the last six years. This is what you want to see, it's a good thing. And at the bottom, it kind of, we like to also document, discuss your fund balance in comparison to your expenditures. As, as of June 30th, 2023, for that fiscal year, you had nearly four months of expenditures in fund balance. That is what you want to have at, for a county of, you know, six, 30 year end. You want to have, you basically want to be able to have enough coming in and basically have enough in your, your fund balance before the next increase, you know, collection of your property taxes, which typically is around October, November. So that, you know, right there, these are all good signs, everything showing very positive results. This is what you want to see. Next thing, I was going to kind of jump over here, there's some other documentation in here that kind of documents our footnotes, the financial statements on page 10. Nothing, you know, out of the normal, out of the, you know, the norm here. Keeps going, I guess right here, you can see on page 11 is, we document and discuss your compliance reports. Now, this is one of the things you were talking about, Ms. Gwen, you were talking about. In that report, we had some findings we need to discuss on the yellow book report. And then there's also a single audit report. For the, you know, yellow book report, we still, you know, it was still fine. We just had some issues that we had to document. For the single audit report, everything was fine, you had a clean opinion there. You had, just to sum that up, you had $15 million of federal expenditures. You end up having two major programs that required a single audit, no issues. So that's good, that's what you want. But we will jump over to now talk about the two findings that were noted on page 15. So during, you know, during the audit, you know, of the financial statements, we noticed some areas with accounting and internal controls that we believe need to be improved. We had two material weaknesses, which is a finding, and we had one management recommendation. All three of these, the management recommendation is not as severe, or it's not as, you know, doesn't go in your financial statements, but it's something we like to recommend going forward, hopefully be remedied, which I believe it is at this point. All right, so go and drive it right into it, at the very bottom of page 15, you will see the general, the first findings, your general accounting matters, closeout procedures for the Tax Commissioner's Office. To summarize this, I mean, to go, you know, too much detail, the Tax Commissioner's Office was unable to provide the necessary documentation that we needed to perform or complete the audit of their office by your deadline of December 31st, 2023. Now, saying this, the reason why this was, there was, you know, we know that there was various accounting functions that were not being reformed and reviewed as needed. I think for the most part, this was probably, I think there was numerous things that happened during the year. I believe they had a system conversion, they changed over to a new software during the year. They also had some turnover, things that, there's some things popped up that probably slowed up the process. But regardless, the fact is, we were unable to receive the documentation we needed to complete the audit. That's the reason why the delay was. We eventually got it at the end of the year, I think it was basically June 20th of 2024. So about, so we got information of the time, but we wouldn't receive it. We would go through it, notice that it wasn't everything we needed. So we kept, you know, that happened multiple times, as you can, you know, as it says in there, and we were. But eventually, once we got it, I believe she got some, I believe the Tax Commissioner's Office got some outside help, some additional third party that, you know, helped remedy that issue. Now, I do not think there's going to be issue going forward. I think this has all been cleared up, so that's a good thing. But it did have a, an effect on getting the audit done this year. I mean, this is also, you know, all that, you know, including in this was the, you know, the proper review and preparation of bank reconciliations, maintaining your general ledgers and your subsidiary ledgers and the related reconciliations for that. In general, just a closeout process as a whole. and the related reconciliations for that in general, just to close out process as a whole. Now, I don't think this is any, I think basically, like I was saying earlier, this is, I believe, was a result of the system conversion and some issues with that in the process of keeping up with the accounting. I think that's, I don't think it's an issue going forward at that point. We also, there was another one, another issue we noted was the segregation of duties. This finding was number two. This is the finding that was about, you know, we, we noted at the office that there was not appropriate segregation of duties among the receiving, depositing, and recording of the revenues. It was noted that some individuals had the ability to open the mail as well as collect receipts for accounts receivable, post cash receipts, and had access to authorized adjustments inside the property tax software. I believe now that has been remedied as well. I don't think that's an issue going forward. I think the access has been restricted on numerous areas there. I think that's a good thing. But as we're here, as we're noting, noting this, I want to make sure to say that, you know, failure to properly segregate duties can lead to misappropriation of assets, and that that would not be normally detected during the normal course of business. Now, saying, like I said earlier, I believe both these findings have been corrected and should not be an issue going forward. And I think we're going to, it'll be a lot smoother next year. If you turn, we'll be to page seventeen. Now, that's for the most part summarizes the findings. I know y'all may have questions, and I will help answer those the best I can. Then one other thing with the management point, this is not as severe, but we did note that there was excess funds at the tax commissioner's office. This is not uncommon. I've seen this, I see this a lot of other counties, a lot of, a lot of their elected officials. It just happens. It's better than deficit funds. Excess funds is better, but still, it needs to be, you know, it needs to probably be looked at and worked on. So we noted about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for which the tax commissioner was unable to determine who the monies were owed to as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The tax commissioner should hold funds purely in a custodial capacity, meaning that all funds held should be owed to somebody, or they, they should be aware of who the money is owed to. Now, at that point, I believe they're working on it and they're trying to figure it out. But as of the time we issued the audit, I believe there was about a hundred, I think it was about a one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of excess funds. Now, in that scenario, if it gets down to the, you know, gets down later, it could just be that money needs to be distributed to the state or the county general fund. It just needs to, you know, there just needs to be some investigation into who the money is owed to, and, and then they should be able, that should, you know, resolve that issue.
Is there interest tacked onto that if they're, if it's payable, like, let's say, to an individual or business, whatever?
It could be. I don't, off the top of my head, but I'll look into that.
I wonder, that, that could accumulate.
That could, you know, that definitely could have an effect. And that could also be part of, they need, I mean, there should be some, something set up, some policies figuring out who the monies are owed to, and it could just be solely the interest.
And I have a feeling that some of that might be excess funds from tax sales.
Yes.
And that should be actually distributed to the state that would never come to the county in the first place.
Yeah. I get, that, that very well could be the case. I, I mean, so, and they could have, that could have been, they may have already looked into that and figured that, that out at this point. But as of the audit, we were not aware of who the money were owed to.
Justin, let me make sure I understand. They have a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that they believe is owed to somebody.
Yes.
But they can't individually count for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars by individual names or state or wherever they're supposed to go.
Government, yeah, any type, yeah. It's just basically who the monies are owed to. They just, and it very well could be like, as she said, the, you know, tax sales. They may just have to go and go down. Because that, you know, some of that money can be held for years and years and years, and that, that happens. I've seen that a lot of ways.
That was my next question. So there is no really deadline to put on that or anything?
No, not what, not I'm aware of. No, I just like.
The only deadline is if you don't, if, if nobody asks for it within the timeframe provided the five years, then it does have to eschew to the state. And she has some notice requirements that she has to provide to, to the taxpayer who lost the property at tax sale. Sometimes it's a hundred dollars, sometimes it's ten thousand dollars.
My, yeah, my concern is just that that is not happening.
Yeah.
Just that, that is not happening.
Did you see this last year? Did you look at it last year and it was squared away and this year it's not?
I don't know if it was that high last year. I, I don't think it, it may, I don't know exactly, but I don't think it was an issue last year, no.
Okay.
I don't think it was this, if it was, it wasn't material, it wasn't significant enough to be noted.
Yeah, I don't remember last year seeing, you know, twenty-two.
It may, it could have been smaller. I mean, but I think that kind of fluctuates, like you said, the tax sales.
So part of my concern is that the person who supposedly left that knew the system was here last year. I don't believe that the kind of mistakes that we have found could have just got born in a year.
I mean.
The, the, if you're not accounting for money, if you have people doing double duty on who's collecting and who's documenting, that just didn't start. So, so yes, as I said last year, when we got our audit back from Malden and Johnson, they were like, you guys are in great shape. You got X, Y, Z in the fund balance, and it really wasn't that. But that was the information that we gave them. It was water authority money. So great job, not trying to beat you up. I'm just simply trying to say I'm very suspicious when someone says the report is clean and we already know that it's not. You know, you, the finding that you gave us is based on the information that we gave you. So, so as far as you can say, one and one does add up to two based on what we gave you. But we all know that there are other problems.
And.
That go outside of the scope of the.
We're going to look and see about those in the forensic audit that's going through.
Yeah.
So I think we'll see if there's other issues to be able to do that. And I sat through one of the forensic audit sessions with Steve and Erica.
Ooh.
To watch and see how that's going. I'm pretty pleased with the way that's all moving forward with. But we'll get that done and be able to back up what this says to what we think is going on in the forensic side. Yes?
So I was having trouble sleeping last night, so I was reading this over.
Ah, good.
No, but on the, the independent auditors report in the.
The gray book.
In the gray book. There was, there was something that jumped out at me, said, we did not audit the financial statements of the Griffin Spalding Development Authority and the Spalding County Board of Health.
Right.
Which represent twenty-six percent, twenty-eight percent, and twenty percent respectively of the assets. And I, I didn't understand.
Yeah, that wording is kind of confusing. I, I can understand that. That's kind of what the standard requires us to, you know, document that way. But what that basically means is there are three component units. Two of them we did not audit, but another auditor did audit those.
Sure, but, but you've got three percentages listed for two different bodies.
Well, no, 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 it's twenty-six percent, like, for example. So it goes twenty-six percent, it goes with the assets, twenty-eight percent.
Oh, I see. Those are the assets in that position.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's just, it's, it's.
All right.
It's just how they word it. It's just how the standard makes it work.
It's an accusative sentence, not an accusative sentence.
Yeah, it's just a.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, I don't particularly like the way it's worded either, but that's just.
This is why I leave this up to my CPA wife.
It is an unusual way to put it, but yeah. So it's basically about twenty-five percent is, is basically we do not.
Okay.
But the other part is the base part. We do the water authorities audit. That isn't all encompassing in this financial statements. But are there any other, besides that, I mean, there are some additional items that we could discuss about. There's upcoming standards, government auditing standards. You know, that will have an effect going forward. Hopefully, it won't be a significant impact on the county. But they're, they're listed out in the behind here, and, you know, basically pages eighteen through, I don't know, twenty-three.
So standards and how we're going to report, or, or standards and, and how you're going to read it?
As they issue standards every few year, or, I mean, they just do it as they see fit. It's basically our government accounting, I mean, auditing standard. They basically come up with the rules and we have to abide by them. And they issue standards every so year, every, every so often, and they have a few coming up in the next two or three years. Like, it's, it's state, you know, state number ninety-nine, a hundred. Some of these are about, you know, your compensated absence, it's about your sick leave, about, and basically how to report, how to account for certain things that are maybe a little different than the previous years. Nothing, I don't, I mean, I think the compensated absence may have an impact going forward for a lot of counties, but hopefully a lot of cities, but hopefully it's not be a significant impact. I'm not sure if we, if that'll be more, that'll be known more in the next year or two when that is, you know, in, in effect. But it's not in effect as of now. And there's also another one for accounting changes and error corrections, which is a, a whole nother item. But that's not in effect yet, but it will be going forward.
So for us, I think the last, that I remember, the last big change was when we had to actually start counting the money that we were paying into retirement as a liability.
That was a big one.
That was a big one. So, so if we don't have anything on the horizon that looks like that, then we may be good. Because that definitely changed how we had to, to look at our money.
That was, that was a big one. I remember that one's a bit vivid.
But I, I think we're, we're taking those funds out at a rate that we feel like it's, it's holding, holding at a steady level.
I was thinking about, I was, you know, I looked at that earlier. I like to bring that up every so often. I think your funded status from the previous years was, I believe, about.
Seventy, eighty?
Seventy, yeah. It was, it was.
Seventy-eight, pushing to seventy-nine.
I think now, yeah, I think seventy-six during twenty-twenty-two, I had a, I think it had a little drop in six, twenty-twenty-three, which I'm seeing that a lot of, a lot of counties, a lot of places because there was a year, like, I think a year or two ago where there was quite a significant downturn in investments. But that should change hopefully for, you know, next year fiscal twenty-twenty, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Also, we had a lot of people to retire.
Well, yes, I don't have an affect to. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different assumptions. A lot of different, you know, this is where the actuaries come into play. They, this is their, this is their world. But yeah, this is based off this. It looks like, you know, I think the biggest thing that had a, was your net investment income basically went, went down in your, in, based on this, you know, your, your fiduciary net position, basically your, you know, your assets for your pension plan. But, you know.
What number are we trying to have?
We see that. What, I mean, I don't really, yeah.
Yeah, Miles, we're working towards seventy-seven is what we're at now, seventy-seven and a half for our retirement plan.
And what's the best practices? I mean, I know a hundred percent, but I mean, in general, eighty percent?
ACCG is working with us to get toward the eighty percent mark. Where we fund every year is in, not the required, but the next level up. So we're pushing toward that seventy-seven, seventy-seven and a half percent mark. And we've been told every year that we're really good for our net position. We, we have that review February-ish.
Yeah. Just good for people to know that their retirement money will be there.
Retirement money has been really good to date, and carefully it will stay there.
Any other questions for Justin?
I don't have anything.
Justin, I want to say thank you for additional work you had to do on this one, many, many hours beyond what we originally have seen in the last years. Your help, ability to call us back and turn around and say, I'll work on the weekends to be able to get this done and stuff like that. It's most appreciated. I know it costs you staff time and everybody working, but we truly appreciate it so that we were able to take care of our requirements and get it done. So thank you from all of us to you.
All right. Well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, we, you know, we're doing what we can. I promise you to do, you know, we were trying to get this thing completed as quickly as possible. I can assure you that.
We appreciate just you giving us the vote of confidence that maybe these things have been resolved and that we may not be dealing with these issues next year.
That is, from my understanding, I do not, I don't believe this will be an, an issue going forward. So that is, that is promising.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I, I love when you get these findings, when we get these findings back, but we don't have any power to make sure that they're enforced or even that the recommendations are taken. So it, it's kind of a big letdown for us to know this, and it's only being shared with us because the tax commissioner's office does not have to recognize this audit or accept these findings as something that needs to be corrected. So just, just as a matter of public, the expectation is not that we're going to be able to fix it because it's out of our wheelhouse.
Yeah, we can't fix it. We can.
We can only say this is the paper.
Yeah.
This is the paper, yeah, if you want to fix it, we would like for you to fix it. Yeah. Okay.
I believe she wants to. I'm, I'm.
I hope so.
We agree, we agree with that, but it's still there.
Yes, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, RFQ staff recommendation for engineer discussion. Dr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff and I had an opportunity to sit down specifically Erica Dye and T.J. Emberger to interview the four respondents to the bid. The four respondents were Falcon Design, Paragon, Croy, and Whitley. Those were the four that submitted a bid for our civil engineering request. The evaluation criteria considered the respondents' qualifications, the experience of the engineers that they were going to assign to the county, the respondent's ability and capacity to provide timely engineering services, level of education and experience of, of the assigned engineers, understanding of the required services and quality assurance, and the diversity of the assigned engineers. During the interviews, I think we were all extremely pleased with the responses that we received. Staff's recommendation, according to the RFQ, was for two engineers. And the engineers that, that we present back to you, Croy came out number one for consideration. Paragon was in the mix. Whitley was in the mix, and Falcon Design was the, the fourth, if you ranked, rank ordered those. But staff is, staff would be pleased with any of the four that, that you recommended. But our consideration and staff's recommendation was for Croy and for Paragon.
Ms., Ms. Quinn?
I do have a comment about this. I'm that person who likes to, to try to keep money local. And what is local? Pike County, Barnesville, Fayetteville, even Butts County. We've never worked with Whitley. They come closely recommended to, to Paragon. We know that Paragon is owned by another company now, but all of their employees live in Spalding County, so they're still local. I would suggest, if we're really not interested in Falcon for the reason that they're for, that we just agreed to, to contract with all of them. Croy, I know, is like, we got people here we can bring tomorrow. But if it comes between who can provide us a better service between Whitley and Paragon, which are both local, we have an opportunity to make it available to them each time that we put something out to Croy or, or any of them. I think it will show us who's really the hometown player. It will also show us whose capabilities are what. And then we can also look at Croy and measure everybody else to Croy as to what, what our expectations are. Maybe we're, maybe when we deal local, we're not really getting the elite. But is it more important to keep money in Spalding County than to have somebody who can come in and bring in a whole factory of people and get the work done? But every bit of the money leaves and goes out of Spalding County. So that would be my recommendation is that we, because we don't have to contract with anyone. We only contract with them as needed.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
So.
I think that's important because I think that we have to look at availability of those that are before. I don't think we should actually even narrow it down to the two. You answered my question. My thing is they're not on contract. It is based on availability. So.
Right.
We need to have them all in the mix in case.
So, so we're just creating a vendor list? Essentially is what this is? Like.
Basically, that's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, they all seem to be able to do it or give the, I don't know anything about Whitley. They seem to have good recommendations, but they're small, just like Paragon. So, you know, they may be the one that says, I can get somebody here tomorrow. Or maybe it'll be a week, and we have Croy or the others two could say, okay, you know.
We don't want to shit ourselves in the foot either, but.
Yeah.
Look, I, I, let me, let me voice your concern. And I'm, I'm not using this as an example of any of the, any of the four. But nineteen-eighty-three, we contracted to build a high school, a, a jail, and a courthouse. And our courthouse, much like this room, has a column in it, except the column is huge and right in the middle and blocks about twenty percent of the judge's view of the audience. And virtually every week, there's a bench warrant signed for somebody who goes, I was there. I was just behind the car. It, why? Because they didn't know how to build a courthouse. They had never built a courthouse before. We're, we're having real issues with our jail. Now, we can talk about what's happened since then, but jails are supposed to, you know, the Lamar County Jail's older than ours, and it doesn't have those issues. And I, as someone who graduated from Griffin High, well, Ryan, you graduated from there, like, it, it wasn't a, a, a super well-designed building. And it was, it, those people got the bid because they were the local ones. But they had never built a high school, never built a, a jail, and never built a courthouse before. But they were awarded it because they were the local firm. And yet now we're kind of stuck with stuff that's sort of. And yet now we're kind of stuck with stuff that's sort of substandard. So, I'm not saying that these companies would do the same, but just because somebody's local doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, how much is it going to cost now to replace that jail?
We have to look at experience, too. You have to look at the history of what the work they've been doing.
We don't, we don't have the ability of, of digital processing. You have people still drawing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and the market is not local. It's really global.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because Croy is not just here in Georgia, not just here in the U.S. And, and I can't say that much for Paragon and Whitley. But I, I say that if we collect money on a sploshed or a tax or anything, and it comes from Spalding County taxpayers, that they would rather see that money go into their children's pockets and buying a car in Spalding County than you being able to pay, get somebody to do the job for a half million dollars less, and none of it comes back here. So, that's what I'm saying. We have, I think we have the ability for them to show us everything and for us to be able to question everything because of the way the technology is now.
Well, everything's built on resume anyway, so, I mean.
So, but we just have to stay on top of it, which is what they were not able to do because the, the knowledge just was not there. And as a matter of fact, I think they built a bunch of schools, didn't they?
I think, I think they have since.
Yeah.
But, and they built a house, too.
My only concern with a couple of them mentioned there is that they, they're also hired by other municipalities in the county and other private sectors, and they got their hands in a lot of stuff. And I'm not saying, I mean, it's a good thing. They're blessed with business, but I want to make sure they got the county's best interest when they make these decisions and stuff.
Absolutely. If someone brings something to us that is, that one of these companies have done, clearly they're not the person who can work on it for us. So, I think that gives us the opportunity to have a choice that we could be confident in. And somebody, we have an, you know, engineer who will look after the engineer kind of thing, so.
Yeah, just as a side, I, I think staff would be very pleased with, with a vendor list for us to be able to choose from. And also, back to Commissioner Flowers-Taylor's comment, it does afford us the opportunity for, for one of the vendors, one of the engineering firms, if they do work for a developer, then they're not reviewing their own work. It's another firm that's going to review the work just to make sure that they're looking out for the county's best interest. And I think that's, that's vital going forward with the amount of growth we've got coming to us.
So, you're, you're saying three? You're saying three?
I, I, I think staff would be happy with three.
My recommendation would be Croy, Paragon, and Whitley added to the vending list for our engineering services. For, we're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five, or?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm blue. I just don't know why we couldn't have all four of them, but if we, if the consensus is three, that's fine.
I think one of them does a lot of government, other governmental stuff, so.
All right. We'll vote on that in the next meeting, so we'll change the agenda from two to three and vote on that one, if everybody's okay.
All right.
Thank you, County Manager. Item number four, human resource policy, personnel policy. Director. No. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon, Miles.
So, I owe, I hate to start by saying I owe you an apology, but I do. When I sent out the personnel ordinance changes, I repaginated everything, and the repagentation didn't save. So, if you've been looking at this, there's no page numbers. So, I apologize for that. It's all somebody else's fault, but I'll take responsibility. It's my fault.
Okay. Let's go through them.
I've got.
Are there ma, can we just start another way?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there major changes? Because not having the old book to look at the new book, as reading through it, of course, lots of this language looks the same.
You, you, you actually do have the old book. It's marked, the stuff that I've deleted is marked through in the book itself.
So, you sent us the old book?
It's the old book, but I've, I've used, I've used the word program to, like, add new stuff, and it's underlined, and then take away stuff with a line through it.
Yes, yes. At least I.
Okay, I just got the one that's got, like, work on this in red. Am I, do I got the right page?
You do have the right thing. That, that work on this was something I meant to take out and didn't, but.
Okay, so.
Anything that's underlined is new. Anything that's marked through is current, but will be old if we approve this.
There was, there weren't, but about ten, ten or twelve things in there really included.
They were marked through?
That were yellow.
Well, there's a whole bunch of mark through, but it's stuff that is in there that is, doesn't need to be in there.
There was about forty pages of mark through.
Of mark throughs for the drug testing policy. Because somehow or another, half the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association's book was put into our book.
I remember that being there, and it's a lot to read.
It was overkill. It doesn't need to be in there, as long as we reference the CFR, which I did. And I left in the stuff that's important for people to know. So, there is a lot of stuff that's out.
When you take out the stuff, pages and pages and pages of deleted items.
We've gone from a hundred, approximately a hundred and eighty pages to a hundred and eight pages.
Nice.
Still large, but it just has so much stuff in there that's not necessary.
Yes.
So, but I, I've highlighted five sections that I wanted to just mention real quickly. And they're probably sections you may have a question about. But because I didn't paginate it, I got to try to help you get to where we need to go.
Okay.
I want to go to near the front. Article four, section five. It says at the top of the page. Applications for employment.
Article four, section eight.
Five.
Okay, please forgive me.
I'm sorry. I saw that this morning. I said, wow, too late. So, at the top of the page, it says, it says, section five, applications for employment.
Hey, hold on one little.
Yes, ma'am.
Applications for employment. I found it. Oh, yay.
So, and, and you really probably don't need to see it to, to follow me, but, you know, I want to let you know where I am. It's section E at the bottom under section six. In, in the current policy, we have in there that says applicants convicted of a felony involving violent crime, such as, will not, will be ineligible for employment. You see that at the very bottom? It's minus through because I'm taking that out. Because since this policy, since this was approved back in, I think, early nineteen, before I came to work here, the ELC has come up with new guidance that says you cannot just indiscriminately not allow someone to apply and consider them solely based on their criminal background. It is illegal to do that now solely based on that. It doesn't mean you can't not consider them, but it means you can't automatically not consider them.
So, section E is what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I remember at some point, it used to be that if you had a felony period, you could not work for the county. And we realized that.
Check the box.
Yeah, check the box. There was no, the city was not doing that. And it was a way of basically screening out people just on the fact that they made a mistake twenty years ago in their life or whatever. So, I, I do remember us saying we would not hire people for violent crimes, but I understand that you cannot define, you, you can't define that on the front side. You have to discuss it.
That, that's right. And we're, I, I just wanted to follow what federal law now says that we need to do. That doesn't mean if they've had a violent crime, we have to hire them. It just means we can't just consider that by itself. We have to look at how far back it was, what type of crime it was, and, and, and do our due diligence so that we're following EEO law.
Okay.
There's also a lot of ways to restore portions of your rights without getting a full pardon. So, but even that person who has their voting rights or even their gun rights restored is still technically a felon. But if your, you know, HR manual says you can't apply, well, wait a minute. I've had all these rights restored. I'm, you know, I was twenty years ago.
Right.
Like, so.
It, yeah, it messes.
There are circumstances now. It's not just, you know.
So, I think what we do now is that if we, during the interviewing process, they, they can talk to you about it.
We don't, we don't even bring it up. We don't even bring it up unless they want to tell us about it. Because we need to see their record before we make a decision on whether or not we should hire them. We don't do it in the interview.
So, so, so you bring, so they fill the application out. We don't ask a question about your criminal history. Do we ask a question about your DUI? Is that still criminal history?
Do you ask criminal history? We do not.
We don't ask that. So, they show up at parks and leisure.
Driving for us. If they're going to be a driver for us, we pull their driving history as well, which would show the DUI.
We do.
Okay. So, but I'm saying you, you don't, you don't start saying we're not going to interview you. You do that afterward?
Yes, ma'am.
When there's a potential offer for a job? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're absolutely right. It's a conditional offer of employment.
So, so if I, if I was that person, I went and wanted to work at Public Works or with Leisure Services Parks or whatever. And I went to jail twenty years ago for selling marijuana. Okay, they can look at me and say, you're not going to be around kids. Or, or is this a crime that will mean that you can't be around kids? Or is this a crime that says you may steal something? How will they, you know, I'm saying at some point, we're going to do a background check. And then those things come up, and then is it at that point that we can say, okay, we've got some concerns. Let's talk about it now, if you're willing to?
That, that's exactly what we do.
Okay, I think that that's great because the per, if the person is good, they're good no matter what. And then if there is an issue, then you just deal with it if you're thinking of offering them a job.
That's right. Now, now, well, I'll, I'll say that that's, the exception is public safety. Because deputy sheriffs, correctional officers, there are certain rules, state rules that have to be followed.
Right.
So, so they will be, you know.
They'll automatically have to go by cos certification.
That opportunity. That's correct.
And I under, totally understand that.
Put groups of people in a bucket and say, you can't. We're going to look at every person as a person first, and also look at their work record and see.
Right.
How they're doing. I mean, it's all important to me.
Look at how awesome our inmate firefighters are.
Oh, my God.
Yes. I mean, they're currently in prison, and they're, they're doing a great job.
They are.
They're just doing a fantastic job.
Yeah.
They are. Okay? And there's a lot of these little procedural things in here that I'm not going to go over, but that are, the laws changed from E, the EEO laws changed, and it includes gender identity and stuff that's not in here, but I'm not going to go over that because of stuff I have to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To be following the law. I just want to hit the, the high stuff.
That's what we have to do. That's what we have to do.
Okay.
Okay, next, if you'll go about six or seven more pages.
Article five.
To, it's section twenty. Probably still in article five. But you'll see section twenty, alcohol and substance abuse.
Oh, wait, hold on. Before you go there, let me stop you for a second, Miles. I made myself a highlight. Section, did you say we're going to section twenty?
I'm going to, I'm actually going to section twenty next, alcohol and substance abuse.
Let's go, I'm past section eleven. I made a note to myself. A right after, under B, under hostile work environment. I wa, it says numbers, I mean, letters C, reasonable person standard.
You want to?
I, I, I just.
Understand that?
I don't because everybody's reasoning, reasoning is the bit there.
Government has something called the reasonable person standard. It was actually, I think, determined by a Supreme Court decision. I'm not positive, but I think it was a Supreme Court decision that says, would a reasonable person believe that whatever the action was, was severely hostile in nature or discriminatory in nature?
I, I know what you're saying. Help me, Stephanie.
The Eleventh Circuit won't define it. None of them will define it. They just.
It, it's one of those, you know, when you see it kind of standards that the, the U.S. Supreme Court likes.
So, if I got lipstick on top of my forehead, and I'm wearing curlers in my hair, and I'm, I'm here in a diaper.
A reasonable person might assume that, that there was a problem.
So, so, yeah, I just always have problems when I see these words that can be anything.
It, it's, it was brought out by the courts, and so we just have it in there because it's kind of now the unwritten law.
And it, it's so old. It was the reasonable man standard. It wasn't a reasonable person.
It was the reasonable man standard.
That's what the laws are.
But, but, you know, any of these things that would ever come up. Well, obviously, we go to our, our, our employment lawyers when we get to a situation where there's a reasonable person standard issue. Fortunately, we haven't had to get to that point. But we could, and we want to be prepared.
A lot of questions as to whether or not they're being reasonable.
Oh, okay, then. Okay, let's go down to, to supervisory responsibility, which is just shortly under that.
Yes, ma'am.
And A. About middle ways down, it says each supervisor department head and elected official of Spalding County is responsible for maintaining a workplace free of sexual and other harassment and discrimination. So, I noticed this. This is one of the few times in this document that we actually talk about supervisors. When we talked about department heads and elected officials and the county manager and the county attorney, we didn't talk about supervisors and we didn't talk about managers. And I think because we have those levels, it really needs to be addressed because those are people in a supervisory mode. So, somehow I would like to see that because it's important enough for us to talk about it as a supervisory responsibility that somewhere in those definitions in the front where we start talking about who we all are. Somehow we need to talk about what managers are and what supervisors are because clearly we may have some department heads, but we have directors now. So, so just.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just a thought.
Well, certainly when we do EEO training, supervisors are part of that. And we make sure they understand that they, they're the first line ones that typically see things that are going on. And that's why they're included in here is because they're the ones that are going to tell me they think there's something wrong, and we need to look into it. So, that's part of our training with supervisors and up as well. And we're due for some EEO training here this year, which we're working on.
Okay. All right. Now, we can go down to twenty.
All right. Well, now just go about four more pages, five more pages.
After section F is your alcohol and substance abuse.
That's right. So, what I, all I wanted to do is let you, you know, I was talking about stuff that's been marked through. If you'll go through, just get through page after page, you're going to see lots of stuff marked through.
I, I'm just not looking at that, Miles. I cannot even see it at all. Help me.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything on that page right there, here?
This is not the original one that I saw to begin with when you sent it out.
Okay, maybe there's a second one because I'm just looking at the wrong one.
It was included with both packets.
Maybe I only opened the one. Maybe I got the wrong document open. I'll go back and look at it before we, before we do tonight, just so I can see what it is. Okay, all right. So, I just want to make sure I wasn't crazy.
I don't know. That's.
Okay, I will look afterwards and see if Carl put his name on there.
Well, he, he didn't because he wants to make it my fault. Okay. So, so with regard to, to that section, that whole section, most of you have the same copy I have. See, there's a lot of stuff marked through. And that's from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. And it's stuff nobody's ever going to read. It just makes people not want to read this, and they don't understand what they're reading anyways. We follow the FRC, FC, we follow it.
C.
That one.
That, that was a lot to expect an employee to even.
It, it, it makes no sense. I mean.
It's get a physical and don't do this as a truck driver.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you took that out.
Yes, ma'am. Me, too.
That was, as you can see, cut and pasted from someplace else.
It was because I went back and looked to see how they knew all this good legalese, and I found it cut and pasted.
Christ, 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 Christ.
Okay. So, I want to go skip quite a ways away to, it says section five, annual leave. I want to go to our vacation leave approval. And it is many pages off. It's article six, section five. And it says at the top, annual leave slash probationary employees.
Uh, section four annual leave or section, oh, section five probationary?
Article four, section five.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. So, at the very top, under that probationary employee section, it says that probationary employees are not allowed to take annual leave until they're no longer probationary, which is foolish. It doesn't make sense. And when I got here, they were already doing it. So, I took that out to say they can. If they accrue eight hours of holiday, I mean, a vacation, and they want to. So I took that out to say, they can, if they accrue eight hours of holiday, I mean, a vacation, and they want to take it-
And they should be able to use it.
Let them take it. So I just took that out.
Yeah.
And, and said, they are allowed, they are permitted to take it.
That's section five, right?
That's section five.
Okay.
Now, going down to section six, I told y'all earlier this year that we needed to update our vacation or annual leave accruals. We are behind most everybody, uh, so I'm, I'm asking you to, let's do this. Currently, we get six days of vacation in the first year. And to give you an example, City of Griffin, that's just one I've looked at, they do ten days in the first year. Uh, there are, are some who just do six days, but then they ju, leap up quickly after that to give more vacation in the second year. So what I wanna do is basically be like the city with regard to that. Ten days for the first year, the first to fourth year, twelve days, fifth to fifteenth year, fifteen days, and sixteen plus, twenty days. Now, we've got some neighbors who go up as high as thirty days when they've been here, uh, twenty years. I don't, I'm not asking to go up to that. I'm not asking to be at the top, but I don't wanna be at the bottom anymore. I'm tired of telling, to te, having to tell potential employees, when they say, what's your vacation accrual? I, I don't like not telling, them knowing that it's that bad, that we're not in line with anybody else. So it, there's no, it's not a big change, but I at least wanna give us-
Other than the City of Griffin, have we looked at anybody else's?
Oh, yeah, I've looked at, uh, Henry County, Fayette County, Coweta County, Troup County, McDonough, and Thomaston. Those in our area. And I'm not trying to be the best, and I'm not, but I don't wanna be the worst.
As long as we follow the lines.
I wanna be in the middle.
Yeah.
So...
Less than one year.
What, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ask a question about money. What does that, what does that actually add up to in a year?
That's a good question, because, because that time off means other people are gonna have to do that, which means we're gonna have to hire, so there is a cost to that. What would the cost?
The, the cost is really potentially a lack of productivity, because if someone gets a couple more days a year off, no one's doing my job for me, it's just not being done till I get back, and then I gotta make it up.
Yeah.
Uh, so, you know-
So I'm not saying that it's not a good idea, because I think we want our benefits to be competitive. I'm just really wanting to know what the actual number would be. So five hundred employees, you know?
It's definitely something I wanna do, but we gotta budget for it.
You add so many additional hours, because, I mean, let's face it, there's no sense in jumping into the ring with increasing our pay to market pay if we're not gonna make our benefits also match that. But I still just want to know if it's fifty thousand dollars a year, if it's seventy-five, if it's two hundred, because that way we can make a, just a rational, in the ballpark, decision.
I get it, but I just don't know how I can give you a dollar figure, because, like I said, using myself as an example, just to be, to use myself, there is no more cost to giving somebody like me more money, because no one else is doing my job while I'm off that particular day.
Yes, it's one day.
It's just not getting done until I get back the next day.
So I think the question goes to, let me ask you a question. Uh, are we fully staffed up, basically? I mean, do, do we have the people?
Oh.
We are about ninety.
We are hiring people like I have never seen before.
So where are, and I think this is where this question comes in.
I can't tell you, because I haven't looked at the exact numbers, but I can tell you, we've had fifteen or twenty new hires every month come to orientation for the last three months.
So percentage-wise, let's keep it percentage-wise, where, where are we as far as staffing?
I would say we're probably eighty percent.
Okay, all right.
And, and that's kind of a hard number to say, because we got a lot of part-timers. Sometimes they're working, and sometimes they go away, 'cause we don't need them anymore.
Right.
But from a full-time standpoint, our sheriff is, is, uh, the jail, which was one of the, was in one of the worst positions, has probably hired twelve or fifteen people in the last two months, and hasn't lost but one or two.
The point I'm trying to make is the fact, that's where, that's where you're gonna actually see the lack of productivity if we're not staffed up and people are out of office, where you're gonna probably see that. I don't know if it's necessarily the monetary figure, if it is, is making sure we have the right adequate people that are doing the job today.
Now, now, having not enough staff costs more money, because now the deputy sheriffs are working more hours-
Yeah.
-to, to, to, to manage the jail.
But if you're in exempt, in an exempt status, which you would be, whether you took twenty-one days of annual leave or twelve, our expectation would be that you did not leave your work in a position where it would be totally screwed up when you came back in twenty-one days. But if you're that person that works an hourly job, there is a way to measure you having three extra hours of vacation per month, or however we're accruing it. And that's kinda what I was trying to figure out. The average person who gets an hourly pay, y, you can't do that for Erica, or Steve, or you, or, or TJ maybe, but for the average person who's making fourteen dollars an hour, eighteen dollars an hour, you can, you can add that up generally. You can add it up. You don't gotta make Miles do a bit. But I'm saying, and that gives us a sense of, okay, we're taking on this much more-
Burden against the payroll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, not that it's not okay, I'm just saying, just so that we know what, what it is, what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to run those numbers for you. I'm not sure I can get them for you this evening, but I'll be more than happy to run the numbers. And you're, you're absolutely right, i, it's not a burden against the, the exempt employees, because the exempt employees are running, um, uh, offset time. So the number of hours that we're working in offset time, that's not gonna count against the vacation, because you're, you're balancing that, uh, that burden, that payroll burden at two hundred and forty hours of time. So anything over two hundred and forty, they lose at the end of the year anyway. So it, it's, uh, it, it's building that maximum time up faster, uh, but allowing the, the frontline employees that vantage point of that two-week vacation during that first year, which sometimes is, um, a blessing for us as we're hiring, because i, if you've got someone who's coming in at a frontline, as a frontline employee who's got a vacation, especially if we're hiring, uh, during the summertime, they're gonna take vacation even if they don't get paid. So we're gonna lose that level of productivity for that week that they're gonna be away, because they may have promised, uh, their partner that they're gonna be away and taking care of the kids.
I get it, I totally get it. We want people to be happy.
Absolutely, and that happy employee gives that discretionary effort. And that discretionary effort is desperately needed, because we run so lean as, uh, as a county government, that we desperately need every person working their job at a hundred percent availability. So we need that discretionary effort. And I think what, uh, what Miles is presenting is during that first year, if you're, if you can afford that extra, uh, just a few days of time off, it's gonna make a big difference for us as we open up even broader the pool of employees that we're having come to us. And back to Miles' point, we have had so many applications, qualified applications, in fact, that's a part of my, my discussion this evening for my, my comments. We've had, um, much more qualified applicants coming to us just in the last sixty days from the decision that this board made sixty days ago. Unbelievable. I can't thank you enough for opening up our, our employment pool. It has made a significant difference.
I wanna ask Miles one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Miles, do you think in terms of retention, it's gonna make a difference for our people that's got fifteen years or more in terms of increasing the amount of annual leave they should get to? Because I just kinda think you can't really do every, a few people and not give everybody the benefit of it.
No, no, and I've, I've increased mine, in, not mine, but I've increased this in here for them as well.
Okay, I just, I didn't hear that.
Just not a lot. I, I'm not, I'm not telling you I wanna do what Henry County does and give somebody who's been here twenty years thirty days off. I just wanna get up to twenty days off.
But, yeah, increasing, yeah, increasing it to whatever it is that they're having, even if it's twenty-one, that's three weeks, or whatever, however we do it, yeah.
It's just been so not great for so long, and we've done so much good lately. I want to, uh, I wanna continue that good, and this is something that people have talked to me about-
Okay.
-for the last five years.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and then, uh, last thing I wanna mention is, uh, is go to progressive discipline. It's Article eight, disciplinary actions is what it's called. And then I'll be done as soon as we finish talking quickly about this section. It is about fifteen pages past the annual leave section. At the top of the page, it says section ten, reinstatement, but we're gonna go down to the bottom of the page that says Article eight.
So you know-
Is it after FMLA?
All, all of us are waiting on reinstatement Reagan to get this up, so just give us this, no, I'm gonna take your time. I just wanted to let you know why we're-
I'm almost done.
Article eight.
It is, it is after FMLA, yes, ma'am.
Article eight, disciplinary actions.
Sorry.
It is about twelve or thirteen pages from the last, from the end. And, and I can just, uh, tell you without you looking at it, it's pretty simple. I haven't taken anything away on this page. Um, I just added a little blurb that says, uh, while we like to do progressive discipline, there are gonna be situations that are gonna come up where we have to bypass progress, progressive discipline and move beyond that.
I thought those were great words, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I thought they were good words in there to be able to explain why we're doing it and everything.
Well, a, a lot of people think, no matter what they do, you have to do first step of discipline, and that is absolutely not true, and we're not gonna do that. Uh, now fortunately, we don't discipline people a lot, because people behave, but when we do, I want them to understand that. And then if you'll go one, two more pages over, I'll be done. It's, uh, number eleven. It says conviction of or a plea of no contest to a crime. I added one little sentence in there that says, under certain circumstances, disciplinary action may be taken for good crawl, cause while criminal charges are pending. That doesn't happen very often, and it has not happened since I've been here, but it did happen to me in a previous life where someone murdered somebody, and the personnel policy said you will go through progressive discipline, because they weren't proven guilty, and they didn't get proven guilty for three years. So the question was, do you keep them on the payroll for three years while they're in, in jail? You know, I mean, that's way out there, but it happened to me. And I just wanted to make sure that we're clear that, under certain circumstances, we could terminate somebody even though they haven't been found guilty of a serious crime.
What article did you say that was, Miles?
It's Article eight.
Well, be, being incarcerated and thus missing work should also seem to be a cause for-
What?
You didn't do your job for the last six weeks. Yeah, I've been in jail.
We do have a three-day no-call, we do have a three-day no-call, no-show.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, but in that case, it didn't work, because somehow I know that they were able to call us from the, from the jail. Tell us, they won't be back for a while.
But I mean-
And that kinda-
But it's even simply, you're not able to do the job.
Understood, but they kinda followed the rule that we had, so we had to change the rule. We got rid of them. It wasn't very difficult, 'cause they were never coming back, and they were found guilty. But I don't wanna get in a position, if I don't have to, when I can add a sentence or two-
Yeah.
-and keep us out of that position. That's all.
I'm just saying, like, adding, you know, even if you call us and let us know you're in jail, like, if you're not available to do your job for whatever reason, you know, like, unless it's an on-the-job accident or maternity leave, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
There are sometimes good reasons for taking extended absence. Jail is not one.
We are doing a great job here.
And that's the criminal defense lawyer's thing.
This is, I'm on the record, 'cause this is recorded, and I'm telling you, this is the best job I've ever had.
Awesome.
Thank you.
This is the best place I've ever worked.
We appreciate it.
Is everybody square with this? Are you ready to vote on it tonight? Do you wanna wait, uh, until a follow-on session when he has put the supervisory definition in there and things like that?
Yeah, let, let's do that, then I can repaginate. Let me make all the numbers right, all the articles look right, and let me make it look perfect.
Okay, I have one more comment I would like to make.
Yes.
I would like to have something in this book that says that the person who is being employed has read this book and understands this book, and they either sign off on it on the computer or whatever, because just giving people this book and not knowing if they've read it, and, um, and, and, though this is not about this, this particular document, I would like for us to have some sort of onboarding process where it's documented that I know about sexual harassment, I know about blah, 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 blah. And so therein later on, the question is, didn't you know blah, blah, blah?
They signed it, they didn't-
Yeah.
We, we do that now. Uh, we don't make them read it in front of us, but we make them sign that they know we have one and that they need to read it, because no one wants to read a hundred and eighty-page document.
No, but, but there's certain things-
So they sign for it now.
Yeah, certain things in here that I just feel like need to happen annually.
Big red flag.
You, you know, you, you know, the sexual harassment thing needs to be kind of a checkoff every year, and then the personnel policy about attendance, maybe that's how you sign, that's a checkoff. So if we could come up with something that would, I don't know, I don't wanna call it an onboarding, but so that we can make sure that people know where their handbook is, know where it is on the webpage if they need to, and that they are responsible to know specific stuff as it changes, not, we changed it and it was two years ago and nobody told you, and now you broke the rule and you didn't know.
That's true, we do that every year in our office. I know we're a very small business, but that has saved a lot when it come to unemployment, too. I mean, when people are trying to file for unemployment, you know, at the end of the day, you know, that having a signed handbook right there-
Right, empowering them to be able to use a personnel policy appropriately.
Because they knew ahead of time.
Okay, you have what you need?
I do.
Thank you, Miles, that's really good, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So not doing that tonight.
No, not tonight. We'll, we'll need to table it this evening, 'cause it is on your agenda. Okay, we'll table this evening and let him have his time to be able to do it just right.
Okay.
Item number five, executive session, discussion of the future acqui-
You missed number five.
Yeah.
Ordinance planning and scheduling update.
County attorney ordinance, uh, ordinance planning and scheduling update. County attorney, Ms. Lynn?
So it's our plan to, every workshop, bring you various questions regarding our, um, review and revision of the ordinance. There are, I, I can tell you, there are sections that are perfectly fine as they are in their current form, and there are others that are very convoluted and confusing, and that take a lot more time to actually go through. But, um, we're looking at end of October as a completion date for our review. That does not mean that you will have approved all of the ordinances by the end of October, um, because there will be some that you'll want to take a longer time to review yourselves and, and ask questions about. But, um, the paralegal that's, that's working for us is doing some, some excellent work right now. I've been very pleased with his, with his work. I did call him off of it a little bit to help me review the alcohol ordinance this one last time. But, um, we also have just hired, uh, another attorney who is currently, um, working for the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, so, and before that, he did Henry County, um, Board of Commissioners work and worked with a private firm as well. So he lives in Griffin and is ready to actually be practicing, practicing law here, so he starts on August the twelfth.
Good.
All right, so, uh-
So how are we going to do that then, Mr. Chairman? I mean, are we gonna, we, are you talking about our whole entire ordinances, all of our ordinances? Or are we gonna just say zoning ordinance, building ordinance?
So right now, what we are working on is not the zoning ordinance. We're working on the Spalding County Code of Ordinances, which-
Which is everything else. Dogs, cats, birds, grass.
Fifteen, twenty minutes at the most during the work session, where we come in and say, let's talk about alcohol. She has the questions ready for us, we know about them, and we go through them and be able to give her the answers that she's looking for, and she may do two or three at a time. All right, we're gonna do these three things at one time and move on through. We've been trying to get this done, you know, for a while, and now we're going to crack the whip and get this done.
Well, just know it's gonna be longer than fifteen, twenty minutes. Whatever other work sessions we have lined in there, let's make sure we're right as far as giving right time.
Well, we just moved our alcohol code to just be in line with the state code, and it's taken us months.
Let's just make sure we know that.
And, and I'm, the thing I wanna say-
Some of them will be easy. Some of them will, will be like the alcohol ordinance.
Commissioner Dutton and I have been, ever since I can remember, talking about architectural requirements for our ordinance. How do, how do-
Just the building itself.
How do we tap that up? Um, how do we not make it mediocre? How do we incentivize people to do, instead of saying, there's three things that you can do to meet this requirement, why aren't we giving them ten, and then incentivizing them to do more green? So, so, yeah, I, that's, I know what you're saying is important, but that's the stuff I wanna know about, and, um- I want to know about, and...
People around here complain all the time about how high their power bills and their gas bills are, all the time. And it's, it's not because the power rate is bad or the gas rate is bad, it's because they've got around, my house, my AC doesn't stop right now, and it's eighty-one degrees inside my house. Why? Because when the house was built, there's, there's just no insulation, and there was no requirement for insulation. And the building code hasn't changed since my seventy-year-old house has been built. Like, there's just no requirement for it. So all my ACs just poofing out the, you know, so if we could change that, all of a sudden, people, we have a higher standard. This was the raise the bar conversation we had eight years ago.
So, so we're just saying, not that that's not important, but that's the stuff that we want to be knowing about happening, like soon.
And, yeah, that's not Stephanie's...
Okay, so that's some other people.
That's Newton, that's Newton's job.
Okay, I'm just...
It's a building code, not a zoning.
We're probably gonna look to somebody else to do that for us.
I mean, just, we just, we'll keep talking about it until...
We need to contract that.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
We need to contract that.
We're, we're gonna get that done.
And not MUNI code.
And just all of us got to know, we're gonna go to some other company.
MUNI code.
Okay, I'm just saying, just don't forget us.
No, 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 it's, it's...
That was prior number one when I ran for office. I'm in my second term, and it hasn't been done.
Sounds like a 2025 problem to me. I won't bet.
There's very few meetings, James, that we don't know that that's not up to the standard.
I just want to, that and that we're not going to close the collection center. Just, those are the two things.
We're just going to charge for them.
That I am going to, where no one's...
Until December thirty, first.
Item number five. All right, so everything minus the other part should be at least reviewed by the attorney by October, and then we'll go through and work our way through it.
So that's...
Get ready to have workshops, and we'll take them in small bites as we go along to be able to do that.
Is that a tabled item for tonight?
That's not on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, that was just info to us.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure all of us knew what we were trying, moving for. All right, executive session, discussion of future acquisition of real estate by, as provided by OCGA fifty-fourteen-three-four. Consultation with the county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought or by or against the county or any officer or employee, or in which the county or any officer or employee may be directly involved as provided by OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash two dash one. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for the four named reasons.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. We're in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, you are back on.
The rest of the body can know is like.
Can I have, uh, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
That's for tonight.
Okay, tonight. Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, we're back on at six o'clock.